One hundred and eighty six to the United States of America. And two to the Republican Party, one nation, one Canada, indivisible, with the liberty of our citizens.
All calls are ready?
All calls are ready.
Gun, gun for first red, red.
Any call for first red, red?
Call for first red, red.
Would you approve rule nineteen, ten, and you just, or anything to that?
No, nothing from this side.
Would you approve in a second? All have a say, I, I, opposed, and area, approval of down, down, eight minutes. First, first, we'll do the approval for workshop on the minutes, mark nine nineteen, twenty one, one, forty one.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, wait a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion on that? Here you go, now, I'll say aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, and area. Look for motion, approve, regular, be, be minutes, maybe thirteen, twenty, twenty one.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second, any questions, discussion on that? Here you go, now, I'll say aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, and area. They'll take the finance budget, we don't pay, able, any questions? Director, director, the financial director, Carl. We have a motion to approve, in a second.
Second.
Questions, discussion on that? Here you go, now, I'll say aye, aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, and all areas. They'll take this motion, general business, first item under general business tonight, will be letter, letter agreement, mental net. Do your other council staff, area, letter, letter agreement, mental net. To actually find the letter agreement, staff, regulations, also, monitoring, the person, John Jensen, mental net, John, thank you.
We're gonna get a pretty good outcome here.
Yeah.
On the first case, if staff has regulations, they may change showing red. Staff, SSS, in approximately thirty four thousand, engineering review, and work with all utility units. Since a new proposal by fire, lines, would be installed along city by railway areas, the local engineer, engineer review, essential, so it's an infrastructure complex. Well, we believe, the providing community with high, high speeds, expansion, internet television, as well as utilize this new, but, but, that, where, as he can not be developed to do. Staff, this will focus here fifty percent of the cost. We would regret it, that, that, to reverse sixty seven thousand dollars of cost, in your, 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 you know. Mister Jensen, in the case of staff, the mental net, may have some concerns about that, since, since, thousand, and may have some, some, services, change, offices, new, baby, and I don't know. Is it ten, 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 some, that are brought down, down, and answering our questions we have had. Mister Jensen, stand up, hold on, you please. Before Mister Jensen starts, does he have anything more to say?
I think we've got a better, superior, um, than things, although when I have a chance to talk about, in person, um, because we have a chance to go to telephone services, and then if we come out, some kind of, that word, that I want to say.
Right, John, for your, your.
Uh, thank, thank you, I wonder, uh, maybe you're here, sometimes I'm nervous, for, for, but, but, I guess, third, you're ready, so. And I'm just a messenger. Um, I was the CEO of Jack Bar, and we helped out all city offices, and fire station stuff, last, last time.
Would be more assisted in providing alternative options. Service exchange options, a little payment back. Is there anything that they can add certain things you're willing to work with us? The amount of cost, maybe same thing as students part. It comes to city gate pay their third one thousand dollars.
All I could get them to give was those sites that we run by fiber to the city could use those fiber.
And then then.
Well, ultimately.
That's for.
Exactly, it was the city goals is they have one hub that they serve all around. Uh, one phone system serves all, one internet base that was all of them. And I think that ultimately does save some. And and their point, she's very around, stay on wires, work, work a lot. Ultimately, I think you all agree that the fiber they're they're making.
If I find there's more or less you're.
Right, right, right.
We're gonna have a hundred steps. We've actually had everything going like we have to have any issues with with and right now we don't have one fee and goes over great, great management. And we have to have our issues. So we just don't see this kind of stuff that much. Which which.
I'm I'm we we are less. We're gonna write a lot about it to to us as a government. I actually said that to the cities all of the sponsors, all the tech users. People know that.
Straight, 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 or anybody can come up with a, they're they're not.
We have a, or for Greg, I really, what do you got any questions, anything to say there?
Uh, is there like a recovery fee or or cost for new customers?
No, no.
There's not us.
It's 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 the unique way they go to it and uh, what they will come in and do is put it in the whole infrastructure, in the whole city. And then it it they will allow, they call them, but when they get a second town and then they'll install. There's no cost to the customer to have that route they take in there, their houses being installed. The whole infrastructure is under our own, is under our own. There's no, there's no cost, it's gonna be a lot of costs, running around the house, you need one more room, there's your no. And then they start, and I'm not sure if you guys saw the presentation, but they start by communication because they don't know that that if they don't do this right. Every person has a choice of the, they don't overstore the IR. Same people that make them ask, clean them up, they don't know also. A lot of companies have, I don't think they can make them ask, and they really don't care about cleaning it up. Same crew, that's that's, they make them ask and clean it up. And they really want, they think of front of your house, they want your house cleaned up forty eight dollars. So you're gonna see that they're they're really good at cleaning out another round, so they don't want to go outside.
No, I I kind of agree with Greg, especially these uh, during these times, there's so many people working for home. That if you give fiber, give more speed to it, work for home and that community.
For for.
I'm 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 the same old, I'm 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 better than you. Your legs are more better. My internet's slower and I got everyone coming better.
Just wanna get, 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 where does this try to.
Well, the difference, the difference is when you charge or send in an internet out, you five policies, it's first come, first served. That's why it's seven o'clock tonight, doesn't matter, what do they say, you're gonna get it's left if you're the last guy out. And then what we do is it's fiber connection directly to every parcel in the city, every business and every home. And so if you pay for around a hundred, no, no, you can't make your wifi, you can't make your hundred, seven nine, seven nine. But you're paying for what you get in your place and that's what you get. Doesn't matter if every one of your names is on, it doesn't affect your connection. That's maybe a difference for power and fiber, power really can't say they're gonna do that.
Cheryl, you you, I'm looking at the center that we have potential, that that's two, that's the chance for you than than what they had the other. So John, John, can I ask this, if uh, if our already a motion that is coming in the air, for both of you here looking at thirty four thousand or thirty four forty, whatever maybe. There's there's other changes in this document that I assume some are suggesting between Sean and our staff. Are are you okay with 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 other proposed changes? Let me just try to figure uh, I'll have to get my motion. Uh, keep it cool, wait, you still need to socialize. Sean, Sean, I see some, yes, yes, yes. Sometimes we feel sorry for.
Basically, we prefer a high, high, which you will, your managers will help Sean or CCL when you get into the construction phase. Um, yeah.
It looks like my life is basically some sort of.
It 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 does, but but I I would be less honest if I say I can, if this is changed with our nurses, other than.
This is what I was thinking my last week.
So it doesn't change.
So maybe you just forgot how to get that back out.
Yeah, well, well, and I I would send this giant handle, leave the, you know, text, but but not on it. And I'll, I'll, I can get that answer on her. I didn't go and say yes, and then I go back and leave this.
Cheryl, so I I I'm totally here to make a, or a motion, we've come across that are. How how we forward as far as, you know, like like you had earlier, I I decided I think we know that.
We can motion to see with a little agreement and no charge, um, to that, 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 that.
Can you tell us?
Ha ha, legally ha ha, and then to the staff, they'll go down the others. See, there's several layers, it's like, why, why, yes, we don't want our work ethic.
Yeah, yeah, please say why, why, since I said no, no.
So, so.
You can tell us, you're maybe charged like Coca-Cola fees for for all, and whatever, we build, and all, I don't like Charles.
No, no, Coca-Cola fees, um, I I don't, I don't even have a, how much I'd charge, I'd pay you it, but you got um.